Bob wanted me to personally swear amen.
You're sworn at, consider yourself sworn.
And then Brian's gonna handle the rest.
Okay.
Get back to another meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a call, do we have a call?
Yes.
Here so.
Okay.
All right, uh, give me one second. We're ready, ready to start when you are, Carl.
Okay.
Is Kurt, is Kurt got, I see he's missing, is he, okay, I see him now.
I am here, Eric, thank you.
Okay, just wanna make sure. I see a blank spot.
He was driving.
And I see the top of John's head.
All right, we ready?
Ready when you are, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to the Public Planning Board Public Meeting of January 28th, 2021, uh, which was scheduled to start at 7:30 PM, but due to difficult, technical issues, we are starting now at 7:44 PM. This meeting will be conducted virtually, all board members, staff and consultants will be participating remotely. The public will be given an opportunity to participate remotely through the advertised Zoom link or optional phone number identified in the public meeting notice. Members of the public should use the raised hand feature icon in Zoom or star nine if participating by telephone to indicate that you would like to be recognized to speak. Meeting and application documents have been made available at the township, township websites, civic clerk, realm, in accordance with the public meeting notice. Applicants will be presenting remotely and will identify themselves before testifying. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God
indivisible with liberty and justice
It was quick.
Flag on and off, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, trying to still help the.
Okay, please be advised this meeting has been fully, has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the Township Clerk, posted on the bulletin board at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex, and posted to the township's website. Additional notice has been, has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the Governor's executive orders and pursuant to Public Law 2020 commacy dot eleven, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to the local finance notices recently established in the state of New Jersey. Okay, do we do the swearing in first or roll call?
A roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Santa Romita is absent, and I believe that's it, Mr. Emick?
Emick here.
Uh, Mr. Chicorelli?
Here.
Mr. Scobo? I know Ron was here.
I don't see him.
Yeah, he disappeared.
Yeah, I don't see him come back in yet.
All right, we'll get back to him, Mr. Pezen?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Wagner here.
Mr. Hasag?
Not here.
Yep.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Not here.
Mayor Lapani?
Present.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
And Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Swearing in of.
You want the township professionals as well, Mike?
My apologies, Mr. Kinsler?
I'm here.
Mr. Maskey?
He is dialing in, he is not in, well, he, he is in, but can't, can't hear us, so he's dialing in, he'll be in in a second.
Mr. Euro?
Here.
And, uh, Mr. Bernstein slash Mr. Hack?
Here.
Here. All right, Mr. Chairman, I think the first order before you get to meeting minutes is I can swear at Mr. Wagner.
Yes, please do.
Who I believe is the only member of the, of the board who has not been sworn in, he's here tonight, so let me find my swear wrap. Raise your right hand, Mr. Wagner, and repeat after me, I will give me, I state your name.
I, Bob Wagner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Class two member.
Class two member.
Of the planning board.
Of the planning board.
Seat number two.
Seat number two.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Back, Bob.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Okay, so. Next item on the agenda, consideration of meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the January fourteenth, 2021 reorganization meeting minutes?
You have the eligible list, Michael?
I do.
Okay.
Everybody unmute?
I have a motion to approve.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Seeing, hearing none, roll call, please.
Chair Emick?
Emick, yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo? He's still not here, uh, Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Lapani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. We do not have any resolutions consideration. Next, uh, regards planning board business, we have the 2020 Board of Adjustment Annual Report that, uh, was submitted to the board as per the municipal land use law. Mr. Maskey, if you're able to hear us, talk to us, any comments? I'm not seeing him.
Yeah, he's not, I haven't seen him jump in yet, so I'm texting him now, can you comment on annual?
The board, I believe, is in possession, Mr. Chairman, of the annual report from the zoning board of adjustment. It says what the members, the meeting dates, the attendance.
Yes, we are.
The board, the board approved for C bulk variances, a number of D variances, which are use variances, including C variances. There was another application for minor site plan approval for a different concept than normally allowed of the zone. There were two denied applications, two withdrawn applications, and a, about a dozen or more that are either carried in 2021 being scheduled or on the process of being reviewed and received. Twelve, twelve in fact, carried or pending, which is basically the same number that were carried into 2020.
Thank you for that summary. Any comments from anyone on the dais or part of the board?
Yeah, uh, I'd like to commend Mr. Herbert for perfect attendance.
That's a great job, yes.
And his vice chair may not have been too happy, never got a chance.
I think Chick is okay with that.
All right, so is she.
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Emick, yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo? Still not here, Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Lapani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And next up is business from the floor, these are for items that are not on this evening's agenda. So if there's anyone in the audience, uh, that would like, uh, to make a statement to the board, again, for items on the agenda, either, um, hit the icon with the hand to raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, do star nine to indicate that you would like to address the board. I am not.
Not either, Chairman, yep.
So we will move on, we do not have any ordinance system consideration, so we will move on to this evening's application, which is, uh, CPE Brunswick, Inc., uh, otherwise known as Seisner, and with file number twenty dash PB dash zero five dash MSPV. Okay.
Mr. Wagner, do you need to go?
Uh, yes, I need to go ahead, uh, Mr. Chairman, and recuse myself at this particular point in time.
Okay. Thanks for joining.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm not recusing myself, but I'm leaving, Mr. Yeah, I'm leaving you in the more than capable hands of Mr. Hack.
Yes, you need to get your snow blower, so.
I have to go get my snow blower from a reputable, uh, company.
I resemble that remark.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanna let, I also wanna let you know, uh, I believe, Mr. Maskey, can you unmute yourself? I believe he is now here and joined us via the phone.
I, I will, before I leave, while Mr., while Fred is working, I will remind the board that we have the Campus Associates application back next week. So, don't plan on going anywhere.
Mr. Maskey, are you there now?
I'm here.
Yeah, you're very, very low, if you could turn your volume up somehow.
Yeah, I'm not having, I'm not hearing you very well either.
We can hear him better.
We hear you a little bit better now. Oh, I think Mr. Scobo is here too, Mike. Let's get him in while we're working on this. Mr. Scobo, I assume that's you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
I guess, let's, let it be noted that Mr. Scobo has joined the meeting at seven fifty-six.
Sorry to interrupt there, Chairman, I guess we can proceed if I, if Mr. Maskey is ready for, to present the application, or what's going on, or however you want to proceed.
Uh, I'll, I'll read it just because I know Dave's volume's down a little bit, but just read it, block, so getting back with the Seisner application, it's block one seventy-eight, lots two and three point zero one, formerly lot three A, otherwise known as four twenty and four thirty Amwell Road in Hillsborough. Uh, the applicant is seeking a preliminary and final major site plan approval, C bulk variances and waivers to construct two two-story mixed-use buildings each approximately six thousand six hundred square feet, a clock tower, forty-five parking spaces, access driveways connecting to lot three point oh one, and site improvements, um, on property in the town center, um, in the, in the town center zone, and with the architectural and site design overlay district. And this was carried over, well, it was actually adjourned, uh, from our last meeting with pre-notice, and um, I don't know if I need to read all the participants for tonight, or we will just, as they, uh, come online, one by one to testify.
Correct.
Okay. So with that, uh, Counselor, I will let you take the floor.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everybody, thank you for, uh, having us tonight, my name is Cheryl Lynn Walters. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Nemad Davis and Goldstein, can everybody hear me?
Yep, yep, perfectly.
Yes, here you're fine, thank you, Ms. Walt.
Thank you. All right, we are the attorneys for the applicant, CPE Brunswick, Inc. The applicant seeks preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variances and design waivers regarding the property just identified by your chairman at four twenty Amwell Road, designated as block one seventy-eight lot two. The application also proposes the construction of an egress driveway on the adjoining Bank of America lot, that's the four thirty Amwell Road, lot three point oh one. The subject property has roadway frontage along Amwell Road, which is a county road, and US Route two oh six, which is under jurisdiction of the New Jersey Department of Transportation. It's located approximately five hundred fifty feet south of the Amwell Road intersection with Route two oh six. The site currently contains a thirteen-space parking lot extension servicing the Bank of America and is otherwise vacant and unimproved. The applicant has been working with the township for what I understand to be over a year now to develop a plan that promotes the township's vision for the town center district where the property is located, and the culmination of that effort is what is before you this evening. You'll see tonight, the applicant proposes to construct a new upscale retail slash office development that we believe the board will find consistent with and representative of the township's vision for town center. The project, excuse me, what consists of two two-story buildings with spaces available for retail and/or restaurant uses on the first floor and office space on the second floor. The proposed uses are permitted in the town zone district. The applicant also proposes to construct a clock tower as an independent architectural feature, which we think makes the project stand out, as well as associated site improvements, which will be discussed in detail by our witnesses. Aside from the proposed egress driveway through lot three point oh one, no other improvements are proposed on the Bank of America lot. Overall, the applicant believes the project will set a highly impressive bar for other future redevelopment in the TC District, and thus will help the township facilitate its vision for the area. Notice that this hearing was duly published in the manner required by the municipal land use law and was served on property owners within two hundred feet of the subject properties. Proof of publication and service of the required notices has been provided to the board clerk, and thus the board has jurisdiction to consider the application this evening. In anticipation of tonight's virtual hea- hearing, we pre-marked and pre-submitted ten exhibits, which will be presented to you during the course of the hearing, and I understand that I'll be permitted to share my screen as we move through those exhibits. I actually prepared the first two exhibits, constituting an exhibit list and a witness list, um, which I, I, I'm hopeful everybody has, I'm willing to share them on my screen if you want to see them. But, um, they just, I, I find in the virtual environment, these types of lists just really kind of help facilitate and keep the record pretty clean. The witness list identifies the applicant's witnesses this evening, who include Michael Ford, our site and civil engineer, Conrad Roncotti, our architect, Gary Dean, our traffic engineer, Richard Crawford, our sign, what I'll term as an expert, which you'll hear through his qualifications, you might actually be the first signed expert you've ever qualified as an expert with signs, and Leah Fury Breeder, our planner. A signed affidavit of oath for each of those witnesses was submitted to Ms. Paget. Um, and if it pleases the board, I'd ask that all five of those witnesses be sworn at this time unless you'd prefer to swear them in one at a time.
Yeah, we'll typically do it one at a time, considering we'll also then, uh, listen to, you know, um, hear their qualifications.
Okay. Okay, also with us this evening is the principal of the applicant, Mr. Er Seisner, Mr. Seisner is available to answer questions. And we also submitted an affidavit of oath for Mr. Seisner, just in case his testimony is requested, and he's listed on the witness list as available as needed. In addition, we have a representative of E coal sciences, our environmental consultants, Mr. Chris Kudazakis. We do not anticipate the need for his testimony, uh, which is why you did not see his name on the witness list, but we, again, submitted an affidavit of oath for Mr. Kudazak, Kudazak, if I can say that right, Kudazakis, um, just to be safe, just in case you want to hear from him, you do have an affidavit of oath on file. So with that introduction, I'd like to present our testimony in support of the application, of course, I reserve the right to respond to comments of the board and the public, including providing rebuttal testimony as may be needed, and I'd like to reserve the right to make a closing statement prior to the board's deliberation if we get that far this evening, which I'm hopeful that we can. Um, so with that, I would start with Mr. Ford, our civil and site engineer.
Okay, so we can swear him in.
Chairman, let me swear you in.
Um, can I just get a clarification, so the environmental consultant is gonna be talking, or no, or is that gonna be handled by Mr. Ford?
It's probably gonna be handled by Mr. Ford, he's available if necessary, but I, I think we'll be able to cover, uh, everything through Mr. Ford and myself.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, if Fred Kinsler, before you get sworn in, are you gonna need to share, right?
I will be sharing, uh, I have all the exhibits ready, I, I just think it's easier for the, for everybody.
Okay, I'll, I'll make, I'll, I'll enable that while he's swearing Mike in then.
Thank you.
You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Just to do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Michael Ford, uh, F O R D, professional engineer in the state of New Jersey with Van Cleef Engineering, appeared before this board numerous times.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chair, would you like me to qualify Mr. Ford further, or wouldn't you?
I, I will just ask him, has anything changed since the last time you were here, which wasn't all that long ago?
No, sir.
Okay, so unless anyone on the board had a change of heart with Mr. Ford? Okay, you may proceed, we accept you.
Thank you. Mike, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Maybe you can, uh, share our exhibits?
Yes, sir. Can everybody see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
This is our exhibit that was pre-marked A three, it's existing features plan. Dated December fifth, two thousand nineteen, it was part of this middle package, and the, uh, only thing that's been done is it's been colorized with an aerial image. Uh, you'll see that the subject site lot, um, two is highlighted in yellow. That, uh, site is, uh, approximately one acre in size, where two acre minimum is required in the zone, that's one of the bulk variances required as the application uh, progresses, and there's also required lot width of fifty, hundred and fifty feet, whereas this existing condition is at one twenty-five point oh four. So we do require a, a lot with variance as part of the application, you can see it's a, I'll say a long, narrow, rectangular-shaped lot with frontage on Route two oh six, which is at the bottom of the page. And you'll see, uh, just opposite this site on Route two oh six is the entrance in and out of the Nelson's Corner or Shoprite facility, which is just the east of this property. And then at the top of the page is Amwell Road. Uh, you can see the existing parking lot on that westerly portion of the site facing Amwell Road, and there's an existing access driveway to the site from Amwell Road. And that is that auxiliary parking, uh, that was used at some time by Bank of America. And Bank of America is, uh, just south of the subject site. Uh, it's, uh, shaded in white with its existing drive-through, uh, immediately adjacent to, uh, the side of, uh, the subject site, and a parking area of some thirty-one parking spaces on the Bank of America site, where the current ordinance only requires nineteen spaces, so there's an abundance of parking on the, on the Bank of America site per the current ordinance. Uh, and as was stated, there are no improvements on the Bank of America site uh, at grade other than the proposed exit driveway, which you'll see in a moment. And then, finally, with regards to existing conditions, I just would like to highlight our immediate neighbor to the north is the, uh, service station and what was at one time the, well, is still the, uh, Shell gas station. And that's at the intersection of Amwell Road and Route two oh six. Maybe perhaps we can go to the next exhibit, which would be A four, and I can describe the proposed project. Okay. As was stated as part of the introduction, it's a, um, proposal in accordance with the TC zone. There are two buildings proposed, uh, approximately six thousand six hundred square feet each, they're two-story buildings, highlighted in beige on the rendering with parking facilities, uh, what I'll call on the front of those, uh, buildings, which is the side of the building that faces into the site. You'll see that there's an access driveway proposed from Amwell Road, that would be an unrestricted access road or driveway from Amwell Road, which is a county road. Uh, and then the, uh, immediately onto the site, there's that auxiliary exit, uh, lane or driveway from the site connecting to the Bank of America, uh, driveway. With regards to access from Route two oh six, which is, again, a jurisdiction of NJ DOT, uh, we're proposing a, uh, right-in, right-out with a left turn in to the site. We do have a pending application with NJ DOT, and this, uh, site access configuration is not unlike the access configuration that is actually currently under construction for the Hillsborough Village Center Apartment Complex just south of this site, uh, opposite, uh, what I would know as the, I guess it's now, it's the Starbucks, uh, shopping center, it's, was the Stop and Shop shopping center. So that highlights the overall circulation, you'll see that we've oriented the buildings and the parking such that it offsets the parking access driveway, so there's not a clear shot through the site. We feel this is, uh, an enhanced, uh, aspect of the application, providing for fluids circulation through the site, but not, uh, something that would, um, encourage, uh, fast circulation through the site. Uh, centrally located within the site, uh, is the clock tower, which is being highlighted now on your screen, and pedestrian circulation that uh, connects the clock tower via walkways with walkways across the front of both buildings and a crosswalk through the parking lot, again, connecting both buildings, and then that, uh, frontage sidewalk uh, has, uh, from both buildings has pedestrian access connections to both Amwell Road, where there's an existing sidewalk, and Route two oh six, where there is no existing sidewalk today. And the applicant would propose to construct a sidewalk across their frontage, uh, which would hopefully, uh, sometime in the future, connect to sidewalks extending both north and south of this site. Um, with regards to utilities, there is existing public sewer and water in Amwell Road. Uh, the connection and service to facilitate these improvements, the two proposed buildings would be through service connections to that existing utility in Amwell Road. Um, so there would be no connection to any public water or sewer, uh, there is no sewer in Amwell and Route two oh six, but that is, you know, I'll say the preferred alternative connecting to Amwell Road where there is less traffic. And we do have, uh, a will-serv letter from HTMU A, and as you know, the New Jersey, uh, American Water, uh, is the public water provider here in Hillsborough. Uh, with regards to trash enclosure, we've, uh, shown and identified a trash enclosure centrally located between the two buildings, adjacent to the parking area. I'll say that we've identified on the plans currently that that trash enclosure would be enclosed within the typical stockade wood fence. Uh, however, the applicant is, uh, willing to upgrade that trash enclosure such that it would be a masonry enclosure uh, with, um, a stone veneer finish look that would, uh, be consistent with the, uh, I'll say upscale architectural elements of the two proposed buildings, which you'll see uh, with, I believe, the next witness, uh, the architect for the applicant. Um, and then also while I'm talking about the upgrade with the masonry trash enclosure, uh, you'll know that there's the, uh, architectural design overlay standards for this area, and one of the standards within that, uh, overlay is the, um, suggestion to provide for, um, colored concrete walkways or stamped concrete walkways or brick paver walkways or paver walkways. You'll see on the, uh, exhibit that we have across the front of both buildings, both on Amwell Road and Route two oh six, a covered outdoor patio area that is going to be, uh, a covered outdoor patio area that is going to be pavers. However, the sidewalks throughout the rest of the site are right now currently shown as standard concrete on the illustration. What the applicant, in response to the review memorandums we've received, is willing to do is, and we think this is a good suggestion to implement, is that we would carry that paver theme from the patios along the walkway across the front of the buildings to the clock tower and the crosswalk between the two buildings. And then that crosswalk, again, in accordance with the architectural design overlay standards, would be enhanced to be a stamped pavement or stamped concrete walkway as opposed to just the standard white striped walkway that's represented on the illustration. So that would be, I'll say, an enhancement or an added element that the applicant would propose. The other crawl walkways, that is along the sides of the buildings and the rear of the buildings that access service doors, would be maintained as standard concrete walkways. Stormwater management. The applicant is proposing an underground stormwater management facility that's right in front of Building 2, which is the building closest to Amwell Road. There's also porous pavement proposed in areas of the site to address not only water quality standards that you all are familiar with now with the new stormwater management standards that have been in place for some time now, I'll say. And then with regards to groundwater recharge, which is another element of stormwater management that's required with any site plan, we're proposing to utilize a stone bed under portions of that porous pavement for groundwater recharge. I'm sure we'll get into it as I progress with my testimony, but I'd like to highlight now while I'm discussing stormwater management is that we are in possession of a review from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission dated June 2, 2020. And while the staff doesn't recommend approval from DNR Canal Commission, their only caveat really is that we provide proof of county and township approval. As the board members know, the DNR Canal Commission doesn't release their final approval until they receive those other two approvals. But I would like to highlight in that June 2, 2020 review or staff report from the DNR Canal Commission, their review has found that the proposed site stormwater management facility, both quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge meet their standards and the state standards for stormwater management. And then with regards to, and we'll get to this in more detail, I think, in a minute, but in accordance with the board engineers review, we would agree to any condition of approval this board may grant that we would address the, I'll say technically, technical in nature comments regarding stormwater management in Mr. Euro's report to his satisfaction. So we have no objections with regards to stormwater management. And I've already received a favorable report regarding same from the DNR Canal Commission.
Hey, Mike, this is Neil.
Yes, sir.
What about the the stormwater, the soil classification that the Environmental Commission brought up relative to the recharge, the soil type C versus D?
Yeah, that's actually also in Mr. Euro's report, and that's a discrepancy reports that we would address to Mr. Euro's satisfaction. And we have done onsite soil testing that I'll say, you know, is even, you know, more pertinent because it's site-specific.
So what's the answer to the question? Is it, what soil type is it?
C, C soil. Parking. We've provided parking for forty-six spaces. I know there's some discrepancies between reports, but the September 8, 2020 revision of the site plan, that's the last revision. That's what's pending and is reflected on this illustration that the board is seeing is forty-six parking spaces with two handicap parking spaces. With regards to loading, we're requesting relief from the one loading space technically required as part of the ordinance. Like other sites, you've heard us discuss. This wouldn't have tractor-trailer deliveries. This would be small box truck or UPS deliveries. And you'll hear even more detail, I'm sure, from Mr. Dean, the traffic consultant for the applicant, that we don't really feel designated loading spot is necessary. And with the applicant owning the facility, they can coordinate through leases, the deliveries at off-peak hours. So we don't believe that a designated loading spot is required. And then with regards to truck maneuvers through the site, we've done a fire truck circulation test through the site, which accommodates the township's emergency vehicle. And with regards to another review memorandum that we received, that is a September 29, 2020 review memorandum from Chris Winiger, the chief fire marshal for the township, would state for the record for the board that we would agree to address each and every one of Mr. Winiger's review comments to his satisfaction, including the standard knockboxes, his final say on any hydrant locations as well as fire department connection locations for the buildings. And these would be sprinkled buildings. And then with regards to the facility occupants and hours of operation, there's not specific tenants designated as of this date, although I will say and report to the board that the applicant has received interest from what were the owners and operators of Big Heads, a restaurant that was located in a shopping center north of this site near the Applebee's Restaurant. And that owner has expressed an interest in occupying the entire first floor of Building 1, which is the building closest to Route 206 for a restaurant. And then what I'd like to say in general is that the tenant mix would be in conformance with what the town center restrictions are. And there are a number of different types of uses permitted on the site, including general office, medical, as I've stated already, the restaurant like Big Heads. And what we envision is likely having a general office or office tenants on the second floors. Both buildings would have elevators. I know there was a discrepancy or not clearly labeled on the site that Building 1 would also have an elevator, just like Building 2 is identified on the site plan as having an elevator. And then with regards to the hours of operation, we don't envision that anybody would have a 24/7 operation. And then with regards to parking, like the segue into that, there was comments made in the review memorandums regarding parking where we identify that the required number of parking for the mix identified, that is, the uses of the two building spaces at thirty-six spaces, where we're proposing forty-six. So you could see there's an abundance of parking for the tenant mix or use of the buildings identified on the site plan. But what I would report to the board this evening, that we've already done a calculation for a more restrictive use, that is, a use of both first floors of Buildings 1 and 2 entirely as medical or restaurant uses, which is four spaces for required per thousand square feet of usable floor area. And we'll amend the applications to reflect what I'm stating here to show that even if both Buildings 1 and 2, the entire first floor was used as a use like medical or restaurant, which has a higher required parking space need per the ordinance, that the forty-six parking spaces proposed would be adequate for those uses. So should, you know, hopefully, we all, you know, wish the success of any proposed owner of a building that Big Heads were to occupy the first floor of Building 1, there would be adequate parking on site for that use. And again, we'll amend the applications to reflect this more restrictive use and that the proposed parking still complies.
And Mike, if I can interrupt for just a second. I just want to, just want to confirm, when you say we'll amend the application to show the more restricted, more restrictive uses, do you mean we'll amend the application as far as the parking calculation chart is concerned to show that the parking would still comply?
That's correct. You know, when we hopefully gain approval for the application and the approval compliance process, and this was actually one of the comments, so I'm really responding also to one of the comments in the review memorandums from the board's professional, there was a request to do just what I'm stating.
Right. So I just want to make sure we're clear for the board in case anybody has any questions. We don't know the tenants yet, but we're just trying to show worst-case scenario to show no matter what, parking would still comply, right?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want me to?
Can I, can I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There we go. This was sort of a test. Sorry for the technical difficulties, Mike and everybody else. So just to clarify in the parking, so it's recognized that if you recalculate based on future tenants and you have a shortage, you would have to be turned to the board for a variance, correct? Do you understand that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Landscaping, the illustration A4 that's still on your screen reflects the proposed landscaping throughout the site. There are some landscape comments in the review memorandum. They'll address them to the professional's satisfaction. And then I just would like to speak, I'll say briefly, to, with regards to a tree removal and tree mitigation. The township ordinance restricts existing vegetation or existing tree removal at sixty percent for commercial operations. Whereas you can see from the tight quarters that we're faced with and also complying with the TC Zone standards, we're going to be removing basically every tree on site. So we're at a hundred percent. We need that relief. With regards to tree mitigation, that is the either replanting on site or if the trees don't fit on site for the calculated trees that we're moving, that the tree mitigation requirement would be met by either trees being planted on site and/or planted somewhere else at the, you know, direction of the township in the township or via cash contribution, where our current calculations shown on the site plans indicate a tree mitigation requirement of a hundred and sixty trees. We're proposing nineteen trees on site, which provides for a shortfall of a hundred and forty-one trees. We're not requesting an economic hardship waiver. We'll comply with the township ordinance with that tree mitigation and the trees that we can't fit on site. So if we can add some more trees while we address the the staff's recommendations and requirements. For example, we're able to fit more than nineteen trees on site. And analyze further the tree mitigation requirement. Any shortfall in accordance with the ordinance would be met with a cash contribution or if there's a, we can work it out with, I'll say, the township planner or I think it's the rec facility operator that there's trees to be planted on site at the applicant's discretion. That would be another way of addressing that tree mitigation requirement.
Mike, let me interrupt you there for just a second. With respect to the calculation of the number of trees required for replacement, we have not yet conducted a tree inventory by a certified arborist, but we plan to do that, do we not?
That's correct.
Okay, so I
Wait, hold on, hold on. I gotta jump in there. Your tree mitigation plan has to be official. You just can't be a guess.
No, no.
I, let me, if I can address that for a moment, what I'm trying to get at with Mr. Ford, what the applicant is proposing is with your guidance and oversight, Mr. Maskey, we will perform, we have a licensed arborist that will go out and do a tree inventory on site and will present those numbers to you because your ordinance has an exemption from the replacement requirement for dead or dying trees.
Yeah, hold on, hold on. No, you were supposed to do the inventory as part of the application, not after the, not after the fact. Submitted, you submitted a calculation that you require a hundred and sixty trees. We're assuming that was based on an inventory, Michael.
Yes, we did an inventory. I think what the attorney is pointing out that there may be, you know, additional detail besides the size and species and location of the tree that wasn't identified. That is dead or diseased trees or the fact that, you know, ash trees, you know, might not be a tree that you would require mitigation for because they're an ash tree. That's all we're saying, Mr. Maskey.
Okay, Michael, you've done this before. You know how this is done. The tree mitigation plan is submitted with the application and it's the official inventory. So as long as we're understanding that you required at least a hundred and sixty trees replacement, you'll replace somewhere in the neighborhood of nineteen and you'll make a cash contribution for the balance. Is that understood?
It deferred to you.
Yeah, if that's your preference, Mr. Maskey, that we don't undertake that further effort, then yeah, the applicant will agree to work with you to replant as many trees on site as possible. And the difference between a hundred and sixty and whatever we're able to plant on site would be subject to the contribution and we're replanting off-site.
That's fine. Thank you.
Let's go to the next exhibit. This is an exhibit A5. It was submitted as part of the application. It represents a conceptual rendering of the site built out as well as the build out of the township's vision of the future look of both Route 206 and Amwell Road. That is improvements to Route 206 with the main, representing the main street appearance with a landscaped island down the middle, one lane in both north and southbound direction, bike lanes adjacent to it, as well as opportunities for parallel parking along Route 206. And then with regards to Amwell Road, and you can see in the lower left-hand corner of this exhibit, there's the cross-sections that we've actually cut and pasted right out of the township's master plan for that future vision of both Amwell Road and Route 206 cross-section. And with regards to Amwell Road, that would be with a grass island down the middle of it where there not, where there isn't a need for left-turn lanes. And I'll, you know, obviously, you know that both Amwell Road and Route 206 are under the jurisdiction of other entities beyond the township at this point. But what I would represent to the board is that this application as proposed doesn't propose any improvements that would impede the future vision of the town for improvements to both Amwell Road and Route 206. And we've, you know, demonstrated that by this exhibit. Okay.
I have a question, Mike. Sorry, the microphone came back on. I had suggested in my letter that you extend the sidewalk across the bank property and you show it on the concept plan, but it's not on the site plan. What's your intention?
Yeah, I can answer that, Mr. Ford. Mr. Maskey, we have a limited right to utilize the Bank of America site. Our easement area covers only the area where we show the Egress driveway. Bank of America did not give us permission to do any other site work on their site, and we don't own it. So that is something that we cannot commit to at this time because we have no authority from Bank of America, and those improvements would be outside the easement area that we were granted.
Hi, this is Mr. Emick. I have a question on that. Did you ask for permission for a sidewalk across your property?
At the time that my client obtained the cross easement was when he purchased the property. So it wasn't contemplated at that point in time, and I think he's made attempts to reach out to them since then. And has, it's very difficult to get in touch with them and we haven't received any responses.
Yeah, because I, I think I picked up the same thing that Mr. Maskey did, not knowing his comment that. You know, especially with the, the residential going down the street. And if like a big head's restaurant were to go into this space, it looks like it's a gap, a missing pedestrian connection. That could be very important and it, for the safety of, you know, pedestrians and bikers. I don't know, I, I'd like to think that at least some outreach could be performed with the actual request. To put a pedestrian path across their property.
If you give me a few minutes to communicate with my client while we move on to other testimony, can we come back to that in a minute? It's a little hard in the virtual environment. I can't just lean over and have a conversation. But I'll communicate with my client on that and, and give you a response, okay?
Thank you.
Should I continue? Let me highlight some outside agency approvals. I've already spoken to our pending application with DOT and the county. With regards to other outside agencies as well as the DNR Canal Commission. We also have already secured our approval from the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. And we have also secured approval from NJDO, I'm sorry, NJDEP. For the filling of an isolated wetland on the site. Let me then go maybe to the.
Hey, Mike. Regarding the, the GP six, is that, is that a new, was that the new application?
That was a modified application. They, there actually was already an approval for the filling of that isolated wetland. And we modified it as required to identify the current owner and applicant of the property.
So it was a modification of the old one?
Correct.
Okay.
And it represents the plan that's identified in that permit represents the current project plan.
Right. Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure it was updated and modified. Thank you.
Right, and that, that.
Just to follow up, Mike, the, 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 the application I was looking at, it looked like it had the old. Concept plan in it for the, when they were talking about a Paneros or some, Paneras or something in there? It didn't look like this site plan that was attached to the permit. Am I misreading it?
No, it's my understanding that the permit plan that was approved was for this, this project. We can, we can forward that information.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, to you, to the township planning department.
Mike, before you continue, are temporarily, do you want me to stop sharing my screen? Are you done with your exhibit?
Yeah, I think we're done with the exhibits.
Okay. That way everybody can still see, can see everybody. I, I frequently, I have two monitors everywhere I work and I frequently forget. Most people don't. So I can still see you while you're looking at my other screen. I apologize.
Okay. Maybe I've already spoken to the review we, we received from Mr. Winiger. I've referenced, but not specifically identified the September twenty-third. Two thousand twenty review memorandum from the board's engineer, Mr. Euro. A state on the record that there are many, I'll say, housekeeping items in there. And I hope that during my testimony, I've highlighted and addressed. The, the questions or items that were requested to be identified in testimony. And as I stated earlier, the applicant is any, as a condition of any approval the board may grant. Would agree to address each and every one of the comments in Mr. Euro's letter to his satisfaction.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. This is Mr. Euro. Just a, a couple of questions for, for the record. My September twenty-third, twenty twenty letter, page seven. Which is under the stormwater section D. So if you go down to item. Would be D four. If you can just provide a little testimony regarding any drainage impacts. From lot one and how they're being handled via your drainage system.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the lot one is the gas station lot, that is the lot northeast or north of our property. Which actually drains onto our property. So we'll have no adverse impact to the drainage on lot one. And actually have as part of our stormwater management system design. Implemented or shown. Headwalls and inlet pipes that would allow for the drainage to continue from lot one. Onto our site through our stormwater management system.
Okay, thank you. On page number nine, section E, under utilities and grading, item number two. I know you identified that you're getting your water from New Jersey American Water. First, have you had any preliminary meetings with them? And second, will they be required? Requiring you to have a meter pit in a hot box? And third, if so, where will that be placed on the plan?
Okay. We have contacted New Jersey American. The, they, they won't really, the next step really, since this is not even a main. Extension, it's just a water surface application as part of the construction permit process for the buildings. And other utilities, there would be a formal application. So that hasn't, to, to New Jersey American water, that hasn't been submitted yet. But to answer your question regarding the meter pit and the hot box. We've seen on all applications recently that the, the. New Jersey American water requires that. In this case, since we're proposing our water surface from Amal Road, the water meter pit and hot box would likely be located along the. Amal Road frontage. And I'll say the only exception would be is on some cases. They would allow it, you know, that to be located within the building. That is the, the meter and the. Then you wouldn't need a hot box, but if it were required, that's where it would be located.
Okay, and just to follow up on that, if, if a hot box is. To be put on the, on the site, which is for everybody's. identification is just, is a big silver box. It sits out there in the middle of the grass. I would just ask that, ask that that be adequately landscaped for screening.
And we can do that. And then why, why we're talking about utilities, I don't think during my testimony, I answered one of your other questions, which was the. Location of the AC units. We would anticipate that they would be located adjacent to the foundation of the buildings and we would locate them. On the interior side of the site that is, right now, I'll say on building one. Be at the rear left corner of building one. That's the lot, the, the building that faces Route two oh six, and I'm speaking rear left corner as you face the building from Route two oh six. And then at the rear of building two, that is, I'll say in that area where, where we had the three parking spaces and the trash enclosure. And these would be small, you know, condenser units. And any further questions in that regard can perhaps be addressed by the architect. Who will testify next.
Okay, thank you very much. That covers all of my. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, if you don't mind, I, I apologize. Before I was offline there for a little bit, I know you may have covered some of the points in my memo. I'd just like to quickly. Backtrack a little bit. All right, so you covered the, and I'm not sure if you have a planner. I guess she's going to be testifying about the actual variance relief. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you noted those. You talked about the parking. You'll recalculate that as needed. You needed a waiver for the deficient stall size. The excessive coverage, covering more than thirty percent of the lot frontage with the parking. I believe you touched on that. Right, yeah, the, so the access through the bank lot. And I see it, it changed a bit from the last version from the informal concept that you submitted. So, correct me if I'm wrong. So from your site, you can exit out through the bank. But you can't enter from the south, correct? Because that's a one-way, your easement across the bank property?
The easement doesn't restrict the, the access.
But you, you've narrowed it from the original version.
That's correct. Only exit only.
So it's exit only. Okay, so if someone comes in from the. Bottle King Shopping Center, they can't access your site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And did you address, and I don't know, maybe, maybe the traffic. Engineer will address the, the whole right in, right out only on Amal Road. Is that going to be addressed later, according to the county's request?
Yes, Mr. Dean will address that.
Okay. I believe you said. The sidewalks and the crosswalks, they would not be enhanced for the ASDO. You'd be looking for waivers for that. Is that correct?
Actually, in my testimony, I described that, that paver. Pattern that we show under the two porches, the covered porches along the frontage of both buildings, one and two facing the road.
Yeah.
That, that. Walking surface characteristic would be, would be carried across the frontage of the buildings. Mr. Maskey, to the clock tower and through across to the frontage of, you know, and connecting with the other building. So. The only, I'll say, portion of the sidewalk that we wouldn't have enhanced or colored and then just have standard. So call it standard sidewalk would be the sidewalk that is down the sides and at the rear of the buildings that kind of services just. You know, the utility build rooms.
Okay, and some, is someone else going to talk about the sign package?
Yes.
Okay, the refuge area, I think the only thing you were missing was the hose connection. I believe you kind of. Took care of the other requirements. Is that right?
Yeah, on building, on building two, the one closest Amal Road and closest to the trash enclosure. We can provide for a hose bid there so that, that.
Okay. Okay. Tree mitigation, we talked about. You're looking for a variance. You're not intending to meet any of the green technology requirements. Is that correct?
That's actually not correct, Mr. Maskey, but our architect will be addressing that. He will be indicating that the, the project will be able to, will be meeting minimum lead requirements.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's it for now. Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Ford, just want to circle back to one thing. There was a comment in the reports regarding the average foot candle for the proposed lighting on the site. Could you address that?
Yes, they're actually, the, the, the three point four that was identified is actually the. Maximum under one of the light fixtures, but the overall average on the site will meet that point five standard. So we do comply.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question regarding lighting, since we're on that topic? Obviously with it being in, and I couldn't tell from the plan, so please, if it's there, I, pardon me, because we're looking at a computer as opposed to a piece of paper. Since this will be in our town center zone and we'll have sidewalks and hopefully people walking to, if it is a restaurant at night. Is there illumination, low level illumination along the sidewalks coming from two oh six? Into the entrance of the facility?
Yeah, our, our lighting plan addresses that and actually specifically says the average lighting intensity, intensity on all walkways.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to touch back to the trash enclosure or the, the trash itself. You indicated that you had supplied a fire truck turning template to the fire official. That shows a fire truck can maneuver throughout the site. Did you run a truck turning template for a trash pickup vehicle? To ensure that could be accommodated as well?
That can be accommodated as well and we can add it to the site plans.
Okay, and then coming back to the question earlier about the sidewalks along Bank of America, I just want to let the board know that I communicated with my client. And he has reached out to Bank of America. He will continue to pursue that. And if they'll give him the permission, he'll install the sidewalks. I would ask though that the condition of, of any approval associated with that, you know, make accurately reflect the fact that we need Bank of America. Consent for that. We're willing to put it in as long as we can obtain that, that consent from Bank of America.
And that's the two oh six frontage we're talking about, correct?
Correct.
Is there any of that, David, in the? Easement of two oh six as far as getting approved?
That's what I was wondering, if any, don't the sidewalk be in the right of way?
Yeah.
I defer to Mr. Ford.
Euro, Mr. Euro, or Mike, wouldn't it, doesn't the sidewalk generally wind up in the right of way anyway?
Well, i- if we're going to accommodate it for that future, you know, so that it can stay. It would be too close, you know, that doesn't really match up with then the future vision of Route two oh six.
Okay.
So we don't need approval from two oh six, we can, that we're, what you're getting at?
Well, it sounds like what, what from Mike saying that, yeah, because the, when you put in the, the future parking lane, sidewalk, bicycle lane, etc. Sidewalk's really back further than, if you put it on now, you probably would be in the two oh six right of way, but that's not where we want it. We, we need it back a little further into the site. So, yeah, I guess for now it would be on the bank property. Does that sound right, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So do the best you can.
All right. And Mr. Maskey did mention, and I don't think we talked about it all, Mike, so if you would just provide a little bit of testimony regarding the parking space size. We did, we are requesting a waiver from the requirement for ten by twenty. We're providing ten by eighteen. But can you confirm for the board that we can still accommodate the same size vehicle with hangovers or through any other attenuating measure?
Yes, we're compliant with the access aisle width. So the access drive through the site is thirty feet wide in accordance with the ordinance. The only, I'll say, portion of the parking space size that we're requesting a very, a waiver for is. The depth of the space where we're proposing eighteen feet and twenty is required. But in all locations for parking, there's ample room for an overhang of two feet beyond, you know, or at the curb line. So. That's our proposal.
So we're meeting the intent of the ordinance in that, in that way. Okay. And then the other waiver regarding parking. Was it no more than ten parking spaces per side? We're providing twelve. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, there's one location, this is a, a, a requirement in the TC zone where. No more than ten spaces are in a row without a landscaped island between them, but. And we accommodate that in all respects throughout the site, but for along our northerly property line facing the gas station. Where the trash enclosure is located, we have twelve spaces in a row without a landscaped island and, and interrupting them. So. So we're two over the ten max in a row permitted in the ordinance and require relief for that condition. And then there's also in the ordinance, not under the town center zone, but another section within the ordinance. That requires a thirty-foot setback for parking from a property line. And obviously with this site. And, you know, being in compliance with the, you know, the thought pattern of the development of the town center zone. We're not going to be able to accommodate the thirty-foot setback for parking to a property lot. And would require relief.
And that's a waiver as well, correct?
That's correct.
Just notes, that's, I believe that's all we have for Mr. Ford unless anybody has any other questions for him.
There was a couple of other, on the parking, you need the variance for. You know, like that more than twenty cars for double-sided parking. You actually have twenty-one, so it's minor, but it's there. And the requirement that no more than thirty percent of the lot frontage along the street. Be occupied by driveway and, and parking, you'd need a waiver from that.
Yes, and with the narrowness of this lot, in order to just get a driveway in. We've endeavored to take up as little amount of that frontage as possible. And I think the architect will go into it in more detail next. The development of the building architectural. Elements have actually changed since we met with this board over. over a year ago informally, where we heard, uh, a desire to provide for a more building frontage facing both roads and, uh, I believe the architect has, uh, accomplished that with the architecture you're about to see.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I thought I saw on one of your plans, is there a parking lot easement that you, that is depicted on the plans, are you sharing spaces?
No, we're not sharing any spaces.
But, okay, what, what's the parking lot easement then that is depicted? Something on one of your illustrations, what's asked for?
So if I can go back to that, and let me show you this Exhibit A3 real quick, I think it, let me know if this is what you're talking about, so I can make sure I'm answering your question, are you talking about this, the existing parking field here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly, but on, I guess on the proposed plan, it's still shown?
Well, yeah, on the proposed plan, and I can switch to that, it, so currently, my understanding is, and Mr. Ford can correct me if I'm wrong, this is a parking field that's utilized by Bank of America, it was sort of an extension of their parking that they utilize at one point in time, we are no longer going to have that connection with Bank of America for parking, there's not gonna be a cross-parking agreement, there's only a cross-access agreement with Bank of America now, so this parking that you see here will be part of, all that area is now part of the new lot.
Yeah, and my, my confusion is if you still look at that, it still says existing parking easement right underneath, that, that's why I was curious if in the, we're still gonna have a share.
No, and we are not.
Not the case.
That is not the case.
Good.
So, um, Mr. Euro here, I would just ask Mr. Ford, just when you make your plan revisions, um, on that site plan sheet, existing parking easement to be extinguished, eliminated, removed, just so there's a notation moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
While, while we're on A3, uh, this is John Ciccarelli, uh, curious about the line on the north side with, uh, the, the trees that kind of overlap both sites, uh, Site One and, and your site, um, you know, it's kind of, I assume it's hard to draw a line there that, uh, you know, says take this tree out and, and, and leave this one, but, so can you, can you talk about your tree inventory, what it accounted for and how that's gonna be handled, cuz I know the, 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 the building structure is right on the property line there too, so are more trees gonna have to possibly be removed and then replanted and, uh, how would that be handled with the property owner on the, the shell property?
All right, so I understand your question, you're, you're talking about this yellow line here?
Yes.
And, okay, and of course.
Trees on both sides, the trees kind of on both sides of it, so, um, just, can you contain that tree removal to just where that line is, it's kind of hard, so, uh, ju-just don't know if there's a mitigation plan, if you have to rip out a couple trees that are on the other side of that, just because your dozer, you know, uh, cuz of how the tree is, is situated, so.
I'll defer to Mr. Ford on that.
But, we've already, we've agreed, like, Mr. Maskey made it clear, we, we got, we have the ordinance to address, we have a plan that we've already shown the existing trees, uh, and we can show tree protection along our, uh, northerly property boundary, so there's no, uh, you know, chance that there would be, uh, a stray construction vehicle, for, for example, to a, a neighboring property, uh, and, um, I'll say, you know, as hard as we try to get this all exact, there's always circumstances or issues that come up through construction, I'd like to say that we never use the revision block on these plans after they go to construction, but there's always, you know, potentially items that come up and, uh, throughout construction, the township engineering department does inspections and we constantly are interacting with not only the township engineering department, but Mr. Maskey's office for any minor changes that, uh, including something like you're, um, you know, suggesting might potentially happen, and they address it at that time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a couple of follow-up questions that came up at the Environmental Commission. So, Mike, are you still planning on using some, some porous pavers to help with the stormwater management?
Correct.
And then, um, the issue of the migratory bird treaty, which, um, we requested the tree clearing be restricted from April 1st to August 31st to avoid injuring any, um, injuring or killing any nesting birds, could you address that?
Yes, uh, uh, we would, uh, prefer that a, a restriction that's, that, that, like that has been suggested not be imposed on this applicant, uh, it's a, it's a, it's, we've already shown of the one acre lot, probably about half of it is pavement already for the parking and there's only about another half acre or less of the vegetation, and what I'd like to point out also is that the DEP permit, which the board knows often imposes restrictions like the one suggested by the Environmental Commission, had no such restrictions suggested or imposed, uh, as part of that DEP permit, so our preference would be that that, that restriction not be imposed.
And, and I can actually take that one step further for you, um, on January 7th, 2021, the Federal Division of Fish and Wildlife issued a new, issued new rules and regulations specifically applicable to the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, it's an interpretation, um, it, it's a really long legal history that if you wanna hear it, I can bore you with it, but the bottom line is, the new regulations actually detail the difference between what's prohibited under the act and what activity is not, prohibited activity includes any intentional killing, injuring, maiming, uh, taking or otherwise impacting of migratory birds or their nests, but the new regulation in the, um, Code of Federal Regulations, that it makes it clear it's based upon a solicitor's opinion, um, it makes it clear that incidental relocation or disturbance of migratory birds during, uh, non-intentional activities, which they define as things like, it, things to include commercial development are not prohibited by the act. So with that, in conjunction with Miss, with Mr. Ford said, um, the federal law as newly interpreted by, well, as newly put into place, I, I actually printed it and read that, if you'd like, I could share it with the board solicitor, I did mention it to Mr. Hack earlier today when I talked to him, um, but that, we don't think that the Migratory Bird Treaty Act based upon these new regulations actually prohibits conduct or otherwise allows, um, or require, otherwise requires a limitation on that period of clearing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd have to read that act, but, um, based upon what I know, um, I mean, I'm taking your word for it, but, um, I'd have to clarify that, and it, what DEP permit are you talking about that would, that doesn't?
The GP, we have the GP 6 for the filling of the isolated wetlands.
That addresses the Migratory Bird Act?
No, what I'm saying is, as you know, like, o-often in the DEP permit, uh, there's conditions of the permit which actually restrict the actions, uh, allowed by the permit to certain times of year, and in this case, the, like, for example, the, for the, regarding bats, um, this permit didn't require any restriction, that's just the point of fact.
Yeah, I mean, that permit was for filling the wetlands, I don't think it had anything to do with the Migratory Bird Act, so I'm not sure I agree with you with that, so, um, and then I'm not sure about the clarification with the Migratory Bird Act, so, I mean, I could go back and ask some of the more subject matter experts on the Environmental Commission, cuz I'm not as familiar as you are, um, with that act at this point, so.
And it just, literally, they just adopted this rule, there's a circuit split between the federal district courts as to whether or not the Migratory Bird Act prohibits the type of activity, um, that we're discussing here, a- and, and/or requires limitations on when that activity can occur, and this new opinion that, or the new regulations they just adopted on January 7th of this year, go into effect shortly, are based upon a, a solicitor's report from the, hold on, I have that too. Office of the Solicitor of the United States Department of the Interior, and it's, that one is also 43 pages and they go in detail about the history of the Bird Act, the Migratory Bird Treaty Act and what its intention is, and it talks all about incidental taking, that was the whole point of that decision or that opinion and now the regulations, what happened was somebody appealed that solicitor's opinion to district court, to a federal court, that federal court recently said that it was no good, and in response to that, the Division of Fish and Wildlife said, okay, you might not like the opinion, but we're gonna implement what it says in regulations, and that's what they've done, so those regulations are now binding, and we would submit to the board that while we respect the Environmental Commission's concerns and we share those concerns, uh, the limitation that's being requested isn't supported or isn't required by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, and we would ask that that not be imposed.
Okay, as long as it's in the testimony, like I said, I, I can't clarify what, what you have in front of you, so, um, we'll just keep it as part of the testimony for now.
And we, we would just obviously submit it to our attorneys for review and.
I did share those, those links with Mr. Hack earlier today, I'm not saying he had an opportunity to review it, but.
We, we will, I, I haven't had a chance to review it, but we will, uh, and, uh, we can certainly communicate our findings back to the board on that issue.
That's all I had.
Okay, with that, Mr. Ford, um, I think we're gonna move on to Mr. Runcotti for now, uh, Mr. Ford, remain available if anybody has anything further for him.
Now, we're, we're gonna first open up to the public if there's no more comments from the dais.
Okay, thank you.
So may have a motion to open to the public.
I'm moved.
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aight.
Aight, okay, if there's anyone in the public, uh, that would like to, uh, question any of the testimony provided by Mr. Ford this evening, please, uh, raise your hand or if you're on the phone, press star nine to indicate you would like to, uh, question Mr. Ford's.
I see none, Mr. Chairman.
Nope, so we will move on to the next witness.
Does Michael need a break?
Yeah, I was gonna ask for just, uh, I guess five minutes.
But before you move on, please, Mr. Stewart has his hand raised now.
Oh.
Yes, he does.
You're on mute, Mr. Stewart.
You can unmute yourself, Mr. Stewart.
About now.
There you go.
Okay, good evening, um, my name is Richard Stewart, I'm from the law firm of Lasser Hockman, I am the attorney for Wieland Hillsborough Associates, uh, which is the owner of Lot Three where the Bottle King is located, and I did have, uh, just one question for Mr. Ford, um, Mr. Ford, I, I believe you indicated that, uh, there would be no access or access would not be permitted from the Bottle King property onto the subject property, is that correct?
Yes.
What about vehicles exiting the subject property over the Bank of America easement area, will they be utilizing any portion of the Bottle King property?
Uh, yes, they would, just like the Bank of America actually goes to the Bottle King property, yes.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Okay, so we're ready to move on to the next, oh no, we're gonna take a break.
Five-minute recess.
We will take a, was it, it looks like it's 9:07, so we'll take an eight-minute recess and reconvene at 9:15 sharp.
Okay, if everybody wants to just put your, uh, turn your video off for, for the break, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you playing any hockey?
No, none, and, uh, I have a baby doo in a month, not even a few weeks. But, um, so, uh, I've been reluctant to get back out there, but my, my teams have been playing.
I just, Neil Leponti, did you see the score?
I have not. I'm keeping, I'm recording it, so hush up.
I, I won't say anything.
That's what, it's amazing you can get through a hockey game in, in sixty minutes when you have it on DVR, right? No, no commercials, no twenty minutes in between.
Yeah, it's pretty incredible.
It's, goes quick. If you fall asleep, you can watch the rest of it later. So Kurt, when, when, when we having the, uh, inaugural, uh, Hillsborough Township Planning Board Hockey Game on your.
It, it could be next week. I mean, it's gonna be cold and I can have a meeting next week.
Do you, do you have a rink?
You could start a new tradition, uh, instead of when we used to have our, uh, mayor's trophy game, softball game against Montgomery, you guys can now do a hockey.
I'll be the puck because I can't skate. It just knocks.
I will, um, I'll go to the hospital right now.
I, I, I reserve to drive the Zamboni.
I'll record it from the side.
There you go. We have to, we have to recruit some people, but yeah, it looks awesome. Yeah, he, uh, he showed me the pic. He built his own little field of dreams there with his, his hockey rink.
It requires mother nature to cooperate.
Yes, yeah, he needed the ice, he needed the cold weather finally.
We do, yeah.
All right, I'm nine sixteen, uh. Michael, do you want to roll call just to make sure everybody's back?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Mr. Amick?
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
I am here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor is not here. Mayor Leponti?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Professionals. And Mr. Kinsler?
Here.
Masky?
Here.
The Euro?
Here.
And Mr. Hack?
Here.
Okay, so we're back, uh, in session and we're bringing up the next witness, counselor.
Yes, sorry, that was one of my other ones. Um, all right, thank you and welcome back. Uh, we're gonna bring up Mr. Roncotti now, who, there he is. Hi Conrad, how are you?
Good evening, everyone.
Hi Conrad, let me just swear in, all right? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Conrad Roncotti, R O N C A T I. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. For over thirty years, my address is, uh, one Executive Drive, Orley, New Year's.
Thank you. So Mr. Roncotti, would you please, uh, provide your experience and credentials to the board?
Uh, certainly, I, I believe I was qualified, uh, when we first began this, uh, hearing on this application, uh, a couple of years ago, but, um, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm licensed in seventeen other jurisdictions. I have Incarp certification. I'm registered in almost, uh, every state up and down, uh, the eastern seaboard, uh, as well as, uh, Illinois, Michigan, Nevada, um, and other states. I've testified, uh, at over a thousand planning and zoning board meetings in New Jersey alone in nearly two hundred different communities during my career.
Mr. Chairman, I would submit Mr. Roncotti as an expert in the field of architecture.
Okay, so anyone from the board, any reservations? I see head shaking no, so we will accept Mr. Mr. Roncotti's qualifications and you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Conrad, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Tell me which exhibit you want and I'll walk through the, I'll make sure they're up as you walk through your testimony.
Uh, certainly, I'll try to get, uh, through this quickly, uh, and thoroughly for the board. Um, we, uh, are the architects. I am the architect for this project. As I was discussed by Mr. Ford, uh, this is a site that is a through site between, uh, two major arteries, two oh six and Hamwell Road. Uh, it is narrow, uh, in its width, but long in its depth. Um, we have read and understand, uh, the town, uh, center, uh, district regulations, the zoning, and our planning of this project, we believe comports with the purpose and intent of those, uh, rules, regulations, and recommendations. Uh, as Mr. Ford presented in his site plan, we are presenting two buildings, one that fronts on each road, but we are also, uh, embellishing the site plan with landscaping and improvements and a clock tower, uh, at the center of, uh, the site, uh, to, uh, not only have, uh, buildings that address the two streets, but also work and present well internally to pedestrians and visitors to the center. Uh, we also understand that these two buildings are seen in three hundred sixty degrees. All sides are visible. We really don't have, uh, a rear side to any of these buildings, so we have worked hard to make sure that the architecture and the aesthetic of the building works, um, on all four sides of each structure. Uh, the materials, uh, in detailing are consistent on all four sides of both structures. Um, and they, they do, we believe, present well as standalone buildings, whether you're on two oh six, on Hamwell Road, within the site, or on the properties adjacent, uh, to us. Um, we have presented, uh, exhibits which, uh, present the elevations of the buildings as well as the floor planes. We've also presented renderings, which I'd like to, uh, discuss briefly here this evening. Uh, both buildings are the same, uh, in theory and in scope. Um, if perhaps, uh, counsel, if we could look at exhibits, exhibit A six, which is a three sheet architectural exhibit. Um, while you get those up, um, building one, uh, as we refer to it, is the building that's, uh, adjacent to Route two of six. First floor, uh, is three thousand three hundred five square feet. Second floor, a little bit larger, three thousand three hundred sixty-two square feet. The slight difference in area has to do with, uh, architectural detailing on the second floor, just the pushing and pulling of the design and the floor plate to make the exterior, um, more interesting. Afforded a couple of extra square feet upstairs on the second floor. The total is six thousand six hundred sixty-seven square feet. Uh, if we could quickly go to the next sheet, A one oh two, same exhibit. Uh, this is building two. The footprint is identical to the first building, three thousand three hundred five square feet. The second floor, uh, is a little bit smaller in this building, three thousand two hundred ninety-nine, total six thousand six hundred four. Again, the only difference in the second floor had to do with the push and pull of the floor plan, the box space and some of the other detailing we did, uh, to make each building, um, aesthetically pleasing. Um, I would also point out that, uh, both buildings are of similar design, similar size, uh, similar materials, but each one, each building is slightly different than the next. We're, we're not looking to create one building design and cookie cutter it twice. So we spent a lot of time, uh, making manipulations to the design, the style of the windows, the use and placement of materials and the like, um, to make sure that the buildings were recognized as being a pair of buildings and being very similar, yet each having a slightly different, um, aesthetic appeal. Uh, there are two and a half story structures, two floors, but a half story, uh, with, uh, the, uh, roof. The exterior, again, as I mentioned, of the two buildings share the same, uh, materials. Um, the, uh, exterior materials include hardy lap siding, cultured stone, um, AZAC composite trim, uh, which is most of the white trim details that you see. We have asphalt shingle on the majority of the roofs, but to break up, um, and create a little bit of accent, uh, mostly on the arcade, but, um, also elsewhere, including the little, um, uh, cupolas at the top. We've introduced metal standing seam roof and a copper color. And then the columns, um, are intended to be a composite fiberglass, so they'll, uh, resist rot and weather and water and will be durable at the arcade where we'll have people walking and strollers, uh, and the like. Um, we've also, uh, I've also reviewed the architectural design overlay standards. Um, these are the materials, the materials that I just described are consistent, uh, with the materials that are outlined, um, and suggested, uh, by that document. Um, there is also a third sheet in this exhibit, if I could, uh, have you turn to that. Um, this is still exhibit A oh six. This is the, um, clock tower that's at the center of the property in between the two buildings. It's twelve feet by twelve feet in plan. Uh, there's a walkway through it and under it, so it's occupiable, uh, in a way, which we think is fun and our pedestrian path, uh, will take you through and under this, uh, clock tower. Uh, if you will note, the materials again are very similar to what we find on the two buildings. So there's a relationship between the, the three structures, the cultured stone, the AZAC trim, and then the copper metal, uh, at the top, uh, the cupola. And I will come back to this, uh, exhibit in a moment. If we could, please, counsel, return to A one oh one.
And just to, let me interrupt just one second, Mr. Roncotti. I just want to let the board members know, I can zoom in and zoom out as you deem fit. So if anybody would like me to zoom in, please just indicate that and I can do that for you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So I would like to, um, discuss the standards, um, of the architectural and site design overlay zone. Uh, there are a series of standards, um, including roofs and roof materials, entrances and windows, facade treatment and facade materials. I just referenced this, um, as well as arcades, awnings, and porches. Um, I could go through each of these, but we comply, um, within the overwhelming number of items we, we comply with, with this design. Uh, and I mentioned some of that in my descriptions of, of the buildings, the roof slope, roof materials, and the use of materials. With the board's permission, I would like to just quickly focus on, uh, the three, um, areas um, that we, uh, need to address where we're requesting, uh, a waiver. Perhaps, uh, counsel, we could zoom in on the, um, elevation three on this sheet. So the first waiver, uh, that I would like to, uh, uh, address is, um, the, uh, window heights, um, must be positioned on the first floor, our retail window heights. Um, your ordinance suggests that these windows be positioned twenty-six to thirty-six inches off the ground. Um, we are proposing twenty inches. So our window sill on our display windows into our retail space, we're proposing at twenty inches. Your ordinance suggests a range of twenty-six to thirty-six. Um, we believe that the design of these windows, the size of them, the proportion of them, um, are, are commensurate with the building design. We also like the idea that, uh, these windows are a little bit lower as we're talking about retail, uh, space. And we also have these porches that we've put on the building facades and covered the arcades. Um, and those screen to a certain degree, those retail display windows. And we would, um, ask that the board consider our request for a waiver, uh, allowing our window sill height to be just six inches below, um, your minimum, uh, recommended, uh, window sill height. Um, there is also, um, uh, a, a requirement in your ordinance that arcades be at least eight feet wide. Perhaps, counsel, we could go to the top of this plan, detail one. So we have, um, on both buildings, and they're similar, we have arcades that are on the front of the building. In each case, front of the building, I'm referring to the uh, two oh six elevation or the Hamwell Road elevation. We've added these porches on the front of the building. And then those porches or arcades return heading into the site along the long, uh, facade of the building, perpendicular to each of those roads. Um, as, uh, your ordinance says, eight feet wide, we have that on the front of each building, again, parallel to each of the roadways. But when we return into the site, our arcades are five feet, six inches. So we're two and a half feet less than the minimum, um, suggested by, um, the ordinance. Um, as Mr. Ford mentioned, uh, during his testimony, and I, I mentioned in the beginning of mine, we have a very narrow site. And after we take into consideration the width of the building, building setback, parking aisles, um, as well as head in parking into these buildings, um, we don't have a lot of room. Uh, we think that the, uh, request for a five foot six arcade is sufficient. We think it's certainly commensurate with the design. Um, and a five foot six would allow, uh, pedestrians to pass each other comfortably. It would allow strollers to pass walkers, two strollers, um, to go side by side. Um, and we don't think that there will be an issue in these two areas where we get down to five foot six. And again, remind the board that the larger, uh, arcades are, uh, along the roadways are, uh, in excess of eight feet. Uh, there's also a little bit more to discuss, uh, with respect to these arcades. Uh, counsel, if we could look at, if you could scroll down a little bit to, um, elevation number five, please. So elevation five, uh, depicts the elevation along, uh, Route two of six. Um, when we first presented this concept and the design to the board, uh, we had a porch, uh, arcade on the front of the building, but it did not extend past the building to the right in this elevation, which is to the north of the building. And we have since added this extension of these arcades, these porticos. Perhaps it could be described as, uh, gazebo-like structures on the building. And the purpose of this, um, was to create more of a facade along two oh six, create more impact, the appearance of a wider building. We can't make our buildings wider due to site plan use and site plan design, uh, and limitations, but we took advantage of the parking beyond these gazebo spaces to widen the building, increase the appearance of the building along the street, and I think start to establish more of, uh, a streetscape as was, uh, the purpose and intent of your, uh, architectural design overlay standards. And what I've described here on building one is the same for building two along Hamwell Road. Counsel, maybe you could look at detail five for us on the second sheet. So again, you'll see in this, uh, elevation five, bottom left corner here. Thank you. Again, this narrower elevation of the building is now increased, and this is a dimension on both of 20 feet. So this building goes from 44 feet in width at the body to 64 feet in width with the extension and with the gazebo. So we think it was a successful solution. We also have some renderings that we can present, which show this all three dimensionally. And I think it's compelling. So we have two exhibits, Exhibit 7 and Exhibit 8. Council, this is not the correct exhibit.
Yes, so that is the one that was submitted to the board, is A07 before I received the one from you. So this is the, I think, the older one that was previously submitted to the board, and that's the one we ended up marking.
Okay.
And I apologize for that because I've a little late into the game on the application. This one had a little bit of a clearer image, but it's not the one, it's not the most recent one I have.
Possible for me, I don't have it to share on my screen, but I could hold it up to my camera? Or is it too late for a new exhibit?
I defer to the board on that. They have a pre-submission requirement that they request we comply with. I, if I, if I stop, if I continue to share my screen, I might be able to go find it.
Yeah. Brian, can you provide some guidance? I believe we have to have everything submitted.
No, I think if the board is inclined to do so, I think it would be helpful to have the more recent exhibit. And, you know, I think it should be presented. If that is what the applicant is proposing in terms of the architectural design, we should see what it's going to be.
Right. I mean, is it material, is there a material difference between the two?
So if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the building is exactly the same. It's simply the new arcade and porch, replacing that more modern image that we just saw. If I held it up, would that help the board in determining whether or not? I know it's rudimentary, but I could do that.
Well, I think we could look at it and then, and just as, as, just as a, then it could be submitted for later. I think I understand what it's, what it's supposed to be.
Can we mark this as a new exhibit then?
Yeah, why don't we mark it as a new exhibit? I was going to say.
We want to just call it B1, just to keep it simple.
Well, we were up to A10, so we just want to call it A11. I would, yeah, that, that would keep it. And then while you're doing that, so that you don't have to just look at what Mr. Runkati has, I'm now forcing him to hold up to the screen. I'm going to try to locate it so that I can show it to you with share screen while he's going through it.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Walter.
Erwin, can you email this to her, PDA, please?
Sure.
Yeah, it's.
I'm going to send it over to you, Sharon.
I have, it's not, it's, unfortunately, it's not that easy because I'm not actually showing it to you from my work computer. So when you email it to my work, I'm not going to be able to share it here at home. I have another method, but I can take care of it, it won't.
Oh, if I may, with my rudimentary screen sharing, you'll notice that the porch and the arcade in this area has been extended.
Excuse me, Mr. Runkati, this is, this Frank, let me see if I spotlight your video, if that will help for everybody, just give me one second. Okay, does that help everybody?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Runkati, you could see, we can see it better now.
So this portion here is consistent with what we presented before. This portion is the gazebo area that I was describing. That was added to the building, extending this facade by 20 feet in appearance. And it also creates a nice entry point for the arcade. So when you come off Route 206 or Amwell, you're into a nice gazebo area in the arcade and either advance parallel to the road or perpendicular to the road, heading back into the site.
Okay. Any questions from the board, comments?
I have one question, Chairman. As far as any lighting underneath those gazebos and/or arcades, as you call it, are they going to be used especially, I guess, for outside dining? For if there's a restaurant there for outside use? Is it adequate lighting or would that?
It would be adequate lighting for that use, yes. An LED lighting. Council, is my second rendering exhibit?
It is, it is what you sent me. It was an oversight, it was not an oversight, it was a misunderstanding on our, on my part.
Only because my second rendering also picks this extension area. And if it's the correct one, it shows the image of that extension and gazebo piece, not from the road, but from internal, looking back out.
All right, I have it all up now, so I'll submit this to the board marked A11. I'll submit electronic and paper copies. This was the perspective that you just were going over? Correct, Mr. Runkati?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. And then this is the second perspective that you were just going to talk about.
Right, so this perspective is looking eastward towards Route 206 from the center of the property. And you'll notice the arcade along the north wall of the building. And you also notice the extension of that front arcade and gazebo piece out to the left side of the building in this picture. And that, I think, does a couple of things. It extends the facade, creates more of the streetscape along both roadways. I think it creates a pleasant entry point for the project and an arrival point. And in a way, it also acts to screen some of the parking in this, these two particular areas from both roadways. So I think it serves, it serves multiple benefits. Also here in these renderings, maybe a little bit more clearly, the board will see the windows that we're proposing at 20 inches being a little bit less than the recommendations under your standards and guidelines. But again, would submit with the transom, with the height of the window and the architecture and aesthetics of the building, it proportionately works very well, in my opinion.
Mr. Runkati, one other question I didn't notice in your plans. Again, being in our TC Center, are there any facilities for bicycles to rack or park?
I would defer back to Mr. Ford.
Okay.
On that, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay.
If I may, there was one other item relating to the arcade. In your, in your ordinance, Section F.2, there is a, also a requirement for a maximum height of eight feet within the arcade. We're proposing to be a little bit taller than that, at nine feet, six inches. But again, given the style, given the, the organization of this, given the aesthetics of this building, and the fact that we're not a strip mall with a very, very long arcade, we feel that having that additional height is going to be important. These renderings are accurate with respect to scale. And we would request also a waiver for a nine foot six arcade ceiling exceeding the eight foot permitted height.
All right, thank you, Mr. Runkati. So earlier, somebody, I believe it was Mr. Maskey, asked us about whether or not we are complying with the green technology requirements of the ordinance. Can you address that, please?
Yes, so there's a green technology requirement in your ordinance. We will have a lead accredited professional involved with the project from the office, from staff. We will provide proof that we need minimum lead standards. This project will be designed to, and we have already made early determinations. We have no problem meeting the minimum lead standards. However, we would like to point out to the board that we may not formally apply for lead certification with the U.S. Green Building Council. So while we will comply with the spirit of the rule, we will meet minimum lead standards, we may not actually make that application for formal lead certification.
That is the intent of the ordinance. It's, we don't expect you necessarily to apply, but the planning department will, will review your, your lead documentation, and that's as far as you need to go.
Fantastic, thank you. And with the board's permission, my next topic is signage to cover.
Mr. Runkati, I have a question. This is Mr. Emick, and maybe you'll talk about it as a part of that clock tower. First, I commend you on the architectials. They are visually interesting. I mean, a lot of detail has gone into them, and I think they're visually pleasing. And so I commend you on that. As I look at the clock tower, is, is the, what's the purpose of the clock tower? Is it more of a sign or is it supposed to be a beacon? Like, I see that there's a clock on it. I think the clock faces, the clock face faces both 206 and Amwell Road to the, I'm trying to think, to east and the west, maybe facing the ShopRite and the Petrox?
So the clocks actually face north and south.
So if you're coming down Route 206.
You'll see that clock.
Okay, okay.
And to be candid, your, your, your question, was it more beacon? Was it more sign? We did attempt to create a balance between something that created a recognizable icon, did provide for signage. But we also felt very strongly that we really needed to create a center to this site plan. And we didn't want to look like a building along 206 and a building along Amwell. We wanted to create a site that internalized in and of itself and felt that this clock tower, in addition to being a beacon, a clock, a town center type of element, and yes, providing signage, kind of did that also. It created an interesting element for pedestrians also.
Yeah, no, I think you did a nice job at it. And again, I can, I can see the vision. How do you plan on illuminating that? In other words, it could be really cool coming down 206 to see it. Is the clock face itself illuminated, like behind? And then are you going to do like lighting, like groundlit? Or is there lighting on it to help illuminate it softly so that you can see it?
I, I, again, to be candid, I didn't think about the clock face being illuminated. But now that you're suggesting that, well, not suggesting that, but asking, it certainly sounds like that might be a good idea. I don't think it's our intention to brightly light this, but I think some accent on it would certainly be beneficial, and it should glow, not project light in any way.
Yeah, again, I'm not sure how my peers, you know, on the board feel about it. But again, I could see how it could be just very striking and visually interesting. I'd hate to see that it's dark. In other words, that it doesn't have any, you know, kind of balance or any presence on the site. So I think there are some opportunities there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I also, I agree with, with what Kirk said. Mr. Runkati, two questions. One, does the size of the windows impact the lead certification? So you're asking for a waiver or on, on the size of the window where the sill's going to be? And I'm just want to, I'm wondering if that affects the lead certification?
I, I don't think it'll affect the lead certification. We have a significant amount of wall surface area left in these buildings. So if we're running our energy calculations or we're looking at lead, I don't believe that we're going to run afoul of those requirements on a, on a calculation basis for like loss heat.
I was thinking more, I was thinking more of natural light in. You know, I know there's a lot of variables that go into lead certification. So I just, I was asking that question.
Good question. I didn't, I didn't pick up on the, my mind went right to the energy side. That's a very good point. Again, candidly, I, I don't think that that was a consideration. It was more of an aesthetic and a, and a desire to make display windows as large as possible without making it look like fully glass first floor, like a traditional strip mall might have with just a band of windows.
Okay, thanks. And on the rendering, I know, and this might not be your purview, but I want to bring the, the issue up, is there was a discussion about the, the length of the, of the depth of the parking spots and that there could be a two-foot overhang. Well, if, one, based on what I see for the arcade there, there's, you know, you're going to hit a post or you're going to encroach on the curb. And so the question is, on these parking spots, is there going to be a concrete bollard on the ground to prevent cars from, you know, entering the store?
I, I just quickly glanced over my shoulder at Mr. Ford's site plan. It looks like our columns are at least two feet behind the curb. In reality, I think our rendering depicts them a little bit closer than they're actually being placed in reality. I think your question still remains, somebody could hit a column and, you know, perhaps parking stops should be added to the plan in these areas, just so that there's a, you know, a curb stop.
Thank you. Looks good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Runkati, thank you for going through all of that. Now, I believe your office prepared a signed schedule, and we did, we did submit that as an exhibit. And I know your, your architectural elevations also demonstrate where the proposed signage would be on each of the buildings and the clock tower. Would you like to run through those?
Yes, could we please, could you please return to Exhibit A06 then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So there are, again, the buildings are nearly identical. So when I talk about Building 1, by default, with many of the things I'm saying, I'm speaking about Building 2. And with the board's permission, I don't want to bore the board by going through the same thing for both buildings. But suffice to say that there are two types of signs on the building. There are signs that are on the sign band, which is immediately above the columns and below the copper roof, for example, in this elevation. On Building 1, there are four of these signs, three on the right side or parking lot elevation and down below in elevation 5, right below that, that's facing Route 206. We have one sign of this size. Each of these four signs is 36 square feet. We have these same signs on the building number 2. And I would point out that this is a variance request. In your ordinance, you ask for a maximum of 20 square feet per sign. So these four signs on this building and six signs on Building 2, which I'll show you in a moment, are 36 feet and exceed that 20-square-foot threshold. I would submit to the board that these signs are well proportioned. We feel that they're in keeping with the architecture of the building. We feel that they are of a size that will allow them to be visible and present to each of the tenants. And that they were carefully considered to be integrated with the architecture. So they're not slapped on a larger field of wall. They're integrated, they're as tall as the sign band. So they're neatly kind of organized on the facade. So they're neatly kind of organized on the facade. These are metal aluminum box signs. They are LED. They are raised channel letters, each of the signs, internally illuminated channel letters, as well as backlit, very softly backlit. So these are very good quality signs. And when we talk about these signage sizes, we're not talking about rear illuminated box signs. So we're not looking at a three-foot-high by 12-foot-wide white internally illuminated sign. We're looking at a 36-square-foot panel area with then-channel letters on it. So the actual signs themselves will be far less than 36 square feet. But logos sometimes are tall and round or square, and then the letters next to them, small. So we're trying to afford ourselves the sign box area that we need. And those sign boxes are integrated into the architecture of the building on this sign band. I would also like to point out that in our exhibit here, up at, Council, we could just scroll up to the floor plans. In each of these buildings, as I mentioned, we're only 3,300 square feet approximately on the ground floor, and that includes the elevator lobby. We are anticipating potentially three retail spaces in each building. That would be the maximum. More than likely, we will not end up with three retailers per building. We could end up with two, possibly one, in which case there is a direct impact on the number of signs that would actually be placed on the building. But we're trying to allow our clients and marketing people the ability to have flexibility. So we're asking for the number of signs that you see before you this evening. There are also on this building, Council, we can go back to elevations three, four, and five, you'll notice up in the gable ends on these three elevations above the second story, in the roof, we're proposing six signs. These are 15 square feet each. So they comply with your signage max, signage requirement. However, in your ordinance, we require a variance because these signs are, as your ordinance states, above second-story window sills. So these signs are certainly above the window sill. They're actually above the windows entirely on the second floor. But in these three gable ends, again, we feel that they're neatly tucked in. And again, this goes to visibility and allowing the tenants to have exposure. If we could just quickly, Council, go to building two, elevations, and again, similar concept, similar information. I won't go through all the details. Again, everything remains the same on this building with respect to the type of signage, location, integration, and the sign band. Here, we have the same six signs above the second-floor window sill at 15 square feet complying with the size requirement, max size requirement. But we also, again, are requesting six signs at 36 square feet, again, exceeding the 20 square feet. There's also a provision in your ordinance that I'd like to point out that signs cannot exceed 10% of the facade area. And I would like to point out to the board, because I think it's important in your consideration of our requests here, that on any given facade with signage, the total aggregate signage represents 1.8% of the total facade area at a minimum, and up to 5.2% at a maximum. So of all of these six facades that we just looked at, the worst-case scenario is 5.2%, which is half of the maximum allowed under your ordinance. So we feel that we're certainly respecting that particular component of your, of your ordinance. With the board's permission, I would move on to the clock tower. We could certainly come back to this. But in the clock tower, which is still Exhibit 806, we have the four elevations of the clock tower here. As I mentioned earlier, in response to a board member's question, there are two signs which don't have signage, two signs that do, facing east and west, generally to the two roadways. We have five signs on each of these facades. Again, recognizing the fact that we could have up to 10 tenants here. That would be max three retail and max two commercial tenants on the second floor. I don't think I mentioned that earlier. Five tenants there for per building, five, and five being 10. But then again, it could be a single tenant, retail tenant, and a single commercial tenant. And we could end up with a total of possibly four, only four tenants on the entire property. The five signs on each side of the clock tower add up to 10.4 square feet. They're each one foot eight inches by six feet wide, each of the five signs. There are also two monument signs. The monument sign drawing itself was prepared by Bardish Signs. It wasn't my exhibit, but the sign portion of the, of the monument sign, and there's one on 206 and, and one on Amwell Road, the signage dimensions, which is sign A on Route 206, is seven feet by nine feet. Again, that has a potential of 10 slots or 10 tenants. And sign B on Amwell Road is a little bit lower but wider, it's six by 12, and again, has the, the 10, 10 potential tenant side spaces available on.
So, so if I get this correct, so there would be two signs for each tenant? One on the monument, one on the tower, or clock tower?
It would be, yes, it would be one on the clock tower, certainly, and then one on the building, yes.
What about the monument sign?
And the monument sign, yes.
So that's three?
Yeah, it would be one on each.
Each tenant would be represented on each of those features. One, on each monument sign on the clock tower, and on, that we each have a sign on the buildings.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think you asked the question, it could be four locations, right? Two monument, one clock tower, and one building mounted sign.
Right. I mean, the building would go without saying, so. Because what I recall-
Of course, we have an unusual circumstance where we have two roadway frontages. So I think we take that, and certainly the board, I hope, would take that into consideration. It might be more than normal, but we do have two road frontages and two separate ingress egress points.
We, we also have a sign, our sign contractor slash expert with us, and who will provide testimony to explain that as well. And you'll get some testimony from Mr. Dean regarding the monument signage as well.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may? Yeah. Well, first of all, we just got the sign package to us a couple days ago, so we didn't really have much opportunity to get into a really thorough review. But from what the best we could tell, there's 22 facade signs for eight to 10 tenants. There are two monument signs, each with space for 10 signs. Then we have the clock tower, which has 10 signs on it, 84 square feet on either side. We have a number of signs that are 36 square feet, which exceed the 20 square feet permitted. I haven't heard any testimony about why all these signs are required. It's an awful lot of signage for a small site.
That's going to come from the next two witnesses.
Okay, these are variances. You realize that?
I, I do, and we have a planner for that as well. But I just, Mr. Ron Cuddy was running through the, what signs are proposed and where they're proposed. Mr. Crawford will give you detail about why, and more detail about the materials and lighting for the signs. Mr. Dean will talk to you a little bit more about the need for the tenant signage on the monument signs.
Keep in mind that we have other developments very close by to this that didn't need any sign variances.
Understood.
Right, and- Near this much signage. Yeah, and I just want to add, because if I recall the last time, I think there, there were some reservations from the board about the tower signage in general. And keep in mind that freestanding signs aren't permitted at all, and you have three of them.
We know. Yeah, we're, we're going to give you all the testimony, and we can talk about the signage on the clock tower. And, you know, as we move, after we move through the balance of the sign testimony, I, I'd like to come back and revisit those questions at that point.
Okay.
Council, I, I had a checklist and an outline. I think I've covered everything that you wanted me to present. If I missed anything, I'm happy to revert to something, but.
The only thing, I, I'd like to just kind of let the, you know, clarify. I'm going to put A6 back up on the screen for just a moment. With respect to your second, the second-floor floor plan for the two buildings, we're currently, as submitted, it was shown as a single office space. You made reference to it, but I, I just wanted to make it clear for the board. We're reserving the potential for that to actually fit two office tenants. Is that correct?
Yes, and I, I think it's possible that it could be subdivided into two. I don't see it being subdivided further. I, just given its size and the way we've organized with one stair and elevator, I, I don't see three tenancies being possible. It's one or two.
So the proposal would be no more than two?
Yes.
Okay. Is the floor plan only showed the one? I wanted to make sure the board understood that we contemplated a second tenant there.
Yeah.
All right, and then I believe-
Counselor, can I ask a question on if you're going to divide that lower section? Do you need to provide another emergency access out the back for the subdivision? Because right now I only see doors, looks like just in the front. Is there anything in the back for emergency exit?
We're talking about the, Mr. Chairman, the first floor or the second?
I guess the, I just, the, the first floor, what you're talking about possibly subdividing, or the second?
We were referring to the office on the second floor.
The second floor, okay.
There, there's actually no, at this size, we wouldn't need two means of egress out of the second floor.
Okay.
And, and the first floor elevations, they do show rear exit doors, do they not, Mr. Ron?
Again, those are not required by fire code, because we're less than 75 feet, but they would be for tenant access, delivery, you know, coming in the back into an office, for example, in a retail space.
All right. Thank you. I, I have no further questions for Mr. Ron Cuddy.
All right, so. So if, if there's any more questions from the, from the board, I will go out to the public. If anyone would like to ask questions on the testimony of this witness, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine if you're, you've dialed in via phone.
I see none, Chairman.
I agree. So we may, okay, I'm just, I'm just checking the time right now. So I think we can move on to your next witness.
Thank you. My next, my next witness will be Mr. Richard Crawford. Mr. Crawford, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening.
I just want to swear you in, all right?
Yes.
Do you swear any testimony you get tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Richard Crawford, C.R.A.W.F.O.R.D.
Good evening, Mr. Crawford. Would you please explain to the board your experience with the design and installation of signage?
Sure. I wear several different hats. I appreciate the board's indulgence. I've been working in the sign industry since 1983. I work with Bartrous Signs located in Oremsburg, Pennsylvania, near Pottsville. I'm a project manager and designer. I have a consulting firm, Mercer Sign Consultants, where I help clients with problems with sign zoning. I'm a licensed attorney in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and I have served on the Board of Directors of a national foundation, United States Sign Council Foundation. It's a 501(c)(3). We do research on signs, research on sign size, sign height, sign lighting, that sort of thing. Most of the research has been done at the Transportation Institute at Penn State, and I've directed about 20 or 22 studies so far.
Have you provided testimony before land use boards in the state of New Jersey before this evening?
Yes, multiple times. I think the last time I was in Hillsborough was 15 years ago at least.
All right. Mr. Chairman, with Mr. Crawford's background with signage, I would submit him as an expert in, in signs. Would ask the board consider him as such. I defer to the board.
Any reservations by any of the board members? Okay, let's see, some head shakes now, so you may proceed. We accept.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford, you are, have you been involved in the, or will you be involved in the development of the signs for this site?
Yes.
All right, and I'm going to defer to you to explain, please, to explain to the board the sign materials and the lighting for each type of sign that's being proposed.
Sure. Well, first, whatever we show, it may have the wrong center name. The center name is Town Square. I, I may have the wrong names on some of them, for instance, the freestanding signs. Could you put up A10, the sign exhibit?
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to go through the signs. The tenant signs on the buildings, first and second floor, the clock tower signs, and then the monument signs. This is a design that I generated showing the signs for the first-floor tenants. They will be, they will have internally illuminated channel letters. They will be both frontlit and backlit. They'll be four-inch-deep letters. The signs will be consistent for all the first-floor tenants. They'll be low-voltage LED lighting, and they'll be complying with the township lighting rules. You see a three-foot-by-12-foot staging panel. That's a fabricated aluminum panel. It's smooth, it's white, that has a two-inch molding put on it. So it looks like it's part of the architecture of the building. The panel holds the wiring and the LED power supplies. The reason the panels are used, one, it's aesthetic, and secondly, it makes changing tenant names and changing tenant signs much more practical, because we're not making a lot of holes in, in the facade. The panel just comes off and a new panel gets put back on. Could you go to page three of this exhibit? We did a project like this with the applicant in Windsor Township, in West Windsor Township, called Windsor Plaza. And these are examples of the style of sign that we're proposing here. It's an elegant look. Light comes out the front of the letters. But light also, white light washes back out the, the back of the letters. It's sort of subtle, but it has a really nice look at night. One note about the signs, and I don't want to put too fine a point on it, but we're asking for a three-foot-by-12-foot sign. But in reality, I can guarantee to the board, no sign is going to be 36 square feet. It's virtually impossible. We did about 26 of these signs in West Windsor. I did an analysis of 10 of them, and when I went through them, the, the sign area of the channel letters ran from 12 square feet to 22 square feet. So all the letters, the actual sign, has to fit within the staging panel. We could just take the staging panel off the wall. It'd have a flat wall, and you'd have channel letters. But we think this is more aesthetically pleasing, and it has a practical aspect as well. The reason why we're looking for 36 square feet, if you will, or 22 square feet, is these signs and the tenant names really won't be visible from either road. It's, in my opinion, you might be able to spy them, but they won't be visible. So we're trying to make these- So we're trying to make these as pleasing as possible for customers coming into the shopping center. And as the architect said, it fits within the proportion of the design of the building itself. The signs for the second floor will be slightly different. Built the same, can we go to page four? Here we go. They're smaller. They're one, one foot six by 10. These signs will not have raised channel letters. They will have what we call routed-out faces and push-through lettering. The reason why they won't have channel letters is because when you get down to the size of the signs of this size, you can't make channel letters that small. I think they'll look complimentary. When you look at the building, you won't say, oh, there's one different type of sign versus another type of sign. But this is the way we can accomplish a high-end look, but also stay within the sign area. Could we go to A6? Although we've been over this, could we go to A6?
A6.
Yeah.
Here you go.
Right. I know we've already gone over this, but I guess this is the Route 206 building, Building 1. Across the front, what I call the front, you have the three-foot by 12-foot staging panels. And then you have the two smaller signs up top. On the end of the building, facing the clock tower, which says rear elevation, you have two signs for the second floor tenants. That's done because the door is there, and we want drivers, pedestrians to have a clue that's where they're supposed to go. On the opposite end, on the side facing 206, you have two small second-floor tenant signs, and you have one down below, the three by 12, for the corner tenant. And then in the left side, or what I call the rear elevation, there are no signs. Building 2 is essentially the same, if we could go to it, with one exception, and that is, on the facade, parallel or facing Amwell Road, there are three signs on the first level. One main three by 12, and then two 30-inch by six-foot signs. They'll have the channel letters. Again, signs up top on the rear or side elevation facing the clock tower, and there's nothing on the back. So that, that is a brief description of the signage on the building. We're not trying to make an excessive request. And when I did the analysis of this actual sign area, I think it's a reasonable request. You could say 36-square-foot staging panels, sign area not to exceed 22 square feet. We could certainly work with that, because I know it will not, actually, because of the moldings and the space you have to have inside. But the staging panel displays the messages in an attractive way. That's why we're asking for it. So that's the tenant signage. I don't know then. Oh, A8, the tower clock rendering, can we go to that?
There you go.
So that, I think we've already discussed, there's signage on both sides of the clock tower. The reason why there's signage on the clock tower, after discussions with the applicant, is when a driver comes in from Amwell Road, he or she will see the names of the tenants in the other building, and vice versa. These signs will really not be visible from the roadway. They're more for internal use. There so far, the, the distance from the road makes it almost impossible for a driver to see and read them. They're identical on both sides, and they'll have the tenants of the other building on both. The panels will be internally illuminated, LED lighting, routed-out faces, so not plastic faces, and the lighting will be compliant with the township rules for sign lighting. So that's, that was the rationale for the clock tower.
For the clock tower signage?
Yeah, for the clock tower signage. And then to the monument signs, which I guess is still A10, is that contained in there?
That is contained in there.
Yeah, okay. So the board will say there's two different designs. I took the sizes off the site plans. One was seven foot by nine foot, that's the one for 206. One is six, the other is six by 12. One is more square-ish, one is more rectangular. They could match. We're just showing the two different options. These signs would be internally illuminated. They would have a fabricated aluminum cabinet, would have LED lighting, would be complying with township lighting rules, and it has a decorative copper roof with the standing seam detail. It'd be painted copper patina, so we're trying to tie into the building. And then as a small stone base, I couldn't get an image of the stone from, for the building, but we're going to use stone that's used in the building for the base. Again, it should say Town Square. And the two sizes, I can't tell you which is better. It could be the board's preference, to tell you the truth. Both, both signs give us adequate size to have a readable listing for a driver on Amwell Road or 206. The posted speed on 206, I believe, is 40 miles an hour. The posted speed on Amwell Road is 45. The question is, why do you, why do you have the listings? Because the building, the tenant signs in the buildings aren't visible from 206 or Amwell Road, it's vital that you have the listings on the tenant directory, in my opinion. And businesses want their names listed. The board may question that, the owner may wonder about, I may not agree with it, but I can tell you, from having dealt with tenants for all these years, they find it vitally important to have their name on a freestanding sign along the roadway. And I know tenants don't spend their money unwisely. It is very important to them, and that's why we've included it here. And we've sized the signs to provide the minimum area necessary to have a visible and legible listing. So we can get four-inch to six-inch letters on this sign for the listings. And if you reduce the size, you're basically reducing the visibility and the legibility, and I'd suggest that may not be, may be counterproductive. But that's the why, because it's really important to tenants, and it's important for the success of the center to have the identification, identification out on the roadway, because otherwise you can't see into the center. It's not like a strip mall or a strip center that's parallel to the roadway. And that is, that is it in a nutshell. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the design or the sizes.
Mr. Crawford, I'm just going to scroll down for the record. I'm just scrolling down to the last page.
Yeah.
Exhibit 10, just to give the, the board the visual of the other alternative for the monument sign. This, this one I'm showing is page six. This is the shorter but wider version.
Yes, so this, this is the six by 12. It's eight foot four to the top. The other one is taller. It's nine foot four at the top. If I had to pick one, I'd probably pick the smaller one, the seven by nine, because it's not as wide, it doesn't have as wide a footprint. And so it doesn't make the driver, even though it's only a difference of three feet, it doesn't make the driver look in an extra three feet to read the sign.
I have some questions or comments. So you have, or at least you're proposing, freestanding sign, directory sign on each street. Fine. You pull in, you've got a 42-foot-high tower with 84 square feet of signage, and then you have 36-square-foot signs on every, on every storefront. Why so much signage? Should I forget it?
When the application was initially put together, the clock, the clock tower, and Mr. Seizner can weigh in on this, because obviously I'm just telling you what the information I have, and I'm kind of scrolling through here, get back to the right image. The clock tower was anticipated for the signage, but with the report from Mr. Maskey and the comments from the board, we, I believe Mr. Seizner would be willing to eliminate the signage on the clock tower. And that would leave the two freestanding signs, the two monument signs, which are vitally important to the success of the project, and the proposed signage on the building. But I would-
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say, I would ask Mr. Seizner to weigh in on that at some point.
Yeah, and then the size of the sign, I mean, the signs that are facing, these are relatively small parking fields. It's not a supermarket parking lot where you have to look several hundred feet to see the sign. You pull into one of these parking lots, the sign's right in front of your face. You're right, you can't see them from the road, but you can see them from the parking lot. Why do you need a 36-square-foot sign when you're parked right in front of the sign?
Well, like Mr. Crawford said, the sign itself is not actually 36 square feet. That's the panel. The raised channel letters that'll be on that panel will be smaller in, in nature, not, probably, in his estimation, no larger than 22 square feet. And if we go back to the image from exhibit A10, it shows you the commensurate signs. This is what we're talking about. Mr. Crawford, if you want to walk through the panel and the raised elements, I can outline them on the-
You know, no, I understood his description of it, but I think you have to clarify what size sign you're talking about. Not, either it's 36 square feet or it's not, or if you're just measuring the actual dimension enclosing the lettering, for instance, that's a different dimension?
Well, if, if I got off, it may not have been presented as elegantly as it should have been or correctly. Because when you talk about three by 12, you start thinking that's the size of the sign. We're really asking for code-compliant signage, but we want it mounted on a staging panel. And in a lot of townships, once you say staging panel, they start counting the whole staging panel. But the sign area itself, for instance, US nails, I think that was, that was like 19.97 square feet.
Yeah.
So you're limited by the height and the width, in any event.
So it's kind of like what we may need is maybe a, an outline within that panel saying where, you know, the lettering or the-
Well, if you scroll up to the first page, counsel, so tenant, right there is six square feet. That's six square feet right there. So if you enlarge that a little bit more, you're at 12. And I, I guess this, I, it could have been presented more clearly, I think. But, and you have to take my word for it, unfortunately, but I know that the sign area will be essentially code-compliant. You have the issue of the panel.
And the, the reason we can't exactly commit to exact square footage of the raised lettering for now is because we really don't know what the tenants, who the tenants are going to be.
That's understood.
And where the tenant requirements are going to be.
So we put in a maximum then in there that this is where the, it would need to, you know, squeeze in.
Right. Mr. Crawford's, Mr. Crawford, if I'm hearing your testimony correctly, that maximum would be 22 square feet of lettering?
And we're looking for that two-square-feet wiggle room for a logo or some part of a sign that sticks up high or low. When I went through the signs at Windsor Plaza, I'm confident that we can make it work.
And how many roughly, how many signs per tenant? How many signs is each tenant getting when you add them all up? Three?
Well, if we eliminate the clock tower. The, the second floor tenants get three plus the free, the five, second floor tenants.
And just to clarify, that's, we can go back to the elevation if you want, but that's one on the, each of the three sides and not the rear, and then one on each monument sign?
Right.
One of the things that, and, and you know, the architect did a nice job of saying, are you trying to fit into the town center vision that we have? Keep in mind that existing 206 is, will become Main Street in not-too-distant future. The signage is not supposed to be highway signage. It's supposed to be Main Street signage. So when you go back and rethink this, and that is up to Mr. Chairman, it's 10:30. I don't know if we're going to finish tonight. I'd like to take a closer look at the sign package, but this is supposed to be Main Street signage, not highway signage. So keep that in mind, please, when you maybe go back and look at this again?
Yeah, just to add to what, you know, what Mr. Maskey was saying, I mean, the speed limit on what is existing is going to be dropped down to 25.
And preferably people will be, it's to be a walkable environment as well.
We'll internalize that and, and talk about it. I don't necessarily, based upon the testimony that's been provided, see that the, the signage on the building constitutes highway signage. It's, you know, embellished into the building and provides, you know, fits in with the architecture, just kind of melds in and provides a nice identification for, for buildings that are not actually fronting on the road but are facing internally to the parking lot, but we can, you know, we'll take a look at it. All right, oops, I'm still sharing. I forgot I was still sharing, sorry.
And so I know we're coming up on 10:30, and I forget our rules, or do we stop taking testimony 10:30 or at 11?
10.
No new testimony after 10:30.
And then, okay.
I have one question, Chairman, for the sign, Mr. Crawford. So, in your opinion, the, the signage to draw the customer to the facility is your monument sign on the road, correct?
That is correct.
And then the sign on the building or everywhere else is basically a wayfaring sign is to direct a customer to the appropriate building, correct?
That is correct. Identify the user, the activity.
So with your testimonies from previous, that the amount of tenants on these buildings may be de minimis as to maybe three or two, or a maximum of five tenants per building, the choices to go to, if I walk, drive in off 206, for example, and I see one sign for heads, I pretty much know that the other building is where I need to go. Yeah, it's not like it's a very large shopping center where there are so many choices that I need to have a wayfaring sign to get me to the appropriate place. So I guess in my opinion, obviously, this is what the board can discuss, and you can come back and maybe, is that the most important is to get the people into the facility from the road. And then at that point, being that it's not a large area, that the customer could probably easily find the appropriate building by looking at the first building they're at, and then realize it's not this building, go to the next one. Without all the signage that popped all over the place. That's just my, my thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I, I agree with what the mayor had said, and, you know, as I'm looking at the second-story signs, I respectfully, respectfully disagree. Now, I don't think they kind of meld into the architecture. I think the architect did a really good job of putting design detail, and I think it detracts. And, and again, I think the site is so small that the most important thing to echo the mayor's comments is, you know, find your way to the site. You know that's where your destination is. You find an open parking spot, and the site is small enough that if it's not in the one building, you've done a good job at putting sidewalks on the site. You just, you know, go over to the next building. My two cents as well.
So in order for us to really analyze, take into consideration and, and revisit this internally, I just want to make sure I, I'm understanding what I think I'm hearing, so that we can take that guidance to heart. It, it seems to me by those last comments from the mayor, Mr. Emick, that we're, the monument signs might not be so much of the issue as the number and size of the tenant signs on the buildings. Is that, is that an accurate interpretation?
Yes, at least in my opinion. I don't know, Mr. Maskey, you have any other thoughts?
Well, again, we, we didn't have a whole lot of time to review this. As you know, freestanding signs are not permitted in this zone, but they are permitted in other parts of the township. We'd like to just sort of compare about, compare these signs to what's permitted in other parts of the town, just to see how they, how they measure up, whether they're large or smaller, et cetera. I believe in many, in certain cases, freestanding where they are permitted, you're only allowed to have the name of the development and the address, not a directory sign, but we can do some comparisons.
Okay, well, clearly, we're not going to finish this evening, so we're definitely going to take the board's comments and concerns into consideration, and- into consideration, and we'll have, you know, we'll pull our team together and maybe even reach out to Mr. Maskey to discuss prior to our next hearing.
Good.
Actually, you raised, Mr. Maskey raised a point about building number, address. You know, is the one building going to be an address on Amwell Road, and the other is going to be 206? Does, and I don't know how that works, you know, Building 1 and 2, Unit A. I didn't see any of that, so I don't know what else, if that's something that the team can consider when resolving this issue.
We will, we will take a look at that. Thank you.
Okay, so there's not any more comments from the board. I mean, I got three folks in the public. I just want to give them an opportunity before we wrap for the evening. So anyone from the public would like to question the testimony of this witness? I do not see any.
I see none either.
Okay, so Brian, some guidance here going forward, and we're going to carry this?
Yes. So clearly, we're not going to take any more testimony tonight and need to carry it. I don't know what your meeting schedule is going forward.
Mr. Maskey, you got our calendar?
Yes, I do. Okay, February 4th, we have the return of campus, so that's full. February 11th, we have JSM, also known as Cost Cutters, returning, so that's pretty full. February 25th is a business meeting. We potentially have two. We have to hear from them yet. The next totally open date would be March 4th.
I mean, just a second, please. Again, the disadvantage of not being able to sit next to my client, lean over and have a conversation, I apologize. And while I'm waiting for a response from my client, I just, I would need to confirm availability of my professionals and also would like to confirm with Mr. Hack and the board that we would make an announcement. I would request that announcement be made tonight, as to the next date with confirmation that no further public notice would be required.
That's, that's fun.
I'm anticipating a response in a moment. Okay, March 4th is good for myself and Mr. Seizner. While we have all my professionals here, I'm getting a thumbs up from my planner, Mr. Crawford. Are you available on the 4th? Yes, I got a thumbs up there. Mr. Ford, Mr. Kudazakis, and Mr. Dean are all, Mr. Conrad, Ron Cuddy, I got a thumbs up there. Thumbs up for Mike. And-
Yeah, I'm good.
Chris, that's Mr. Kudazakis. So it's like we're all available on March 4th, and we would appreciate that.
Ms. Walters, just, your time of decision runs out, it looks like February 28th, so we'd need an extension to the end of March.
Agreed.
Okay. Brian, did you get that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion to continue without renotice to March what, David?
4th.
March 4th.
Second. Okay, comments from the dais. Okay, roll call, please, or, yeah?
Mr. Emick?
Emick, yes.
Mr. Chicarali?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Mayor Leponti?
Yes.
Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sirocchi?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. We will take everything you said into heart, into consideration. We'll regroup, and we'll see what we can do to address any of those concerns that you've raised tonight. And I'll make sure we get Mr. Maskey an updated package, signed package, more than, you know, a couple days in advance with our exhibits.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walter.
So board members stay on-
Yes, board members hang out.
Sorry.
It's all good. So as Mr. Maskey said, just a reminder, we do have a meeting next week on the 4th. So as always, if anyone's unable to attend, please reach out to the planning office as soon as possible. And with that, Mr. Maskey, I want to see, you have anything else to add?
No, the only thing, I guess, the board should have received, or it's on Civic Clerk, there was another, a new memo from the Environmental Commission. Hopefully you've all seen that, on the campus, on the campus application. Okay, that's it.
All right, so with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Ron Scobbo.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, great. We'll see everyone again.